Ready, Annie? Okay. Good morning, if there's anybody out there, hopefully you can hear me. We're getting ready to start our commission meeting, I guess what you say. For the first day of September, what a heck of a way to start out September, a nice rainy day. But we're very fortunate, we could have gotten a lot more rain than what we received. So that's great. As with every meeting, we'll go ahead and start off with our pledge of allegiance and would you like to lead this?
I pray we're under the bus for first day.
No, I'm not throwing her, this is a holder.
I'll pray the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anthony, you want to introduce everybody?
This is Chamberlain Marie, she's newest employee at Prosecutor's Office. Going to do a real legal assistance and also.
Well, welcome. Anthony's got a great team over there. They all work together and they've done some incredible things and welcome to his side of the world. And have you on board? Okay.
Did you, are you about to get your graduate?
Yeah.
Congratulations, that's impressive. My first question to Anthony was, where'd you find her? I used to work over there too, you're gonna enjoy it.
Okay, so we are ready to start our nine o'clock discussion. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Anthony. We're going to discuss our comprehensive plan. Where's your brings to that?
Is she on Zoom?
Hey, everyone, I'm online.
Okay. Good morning, Jenna, how are you?
Good morning, how are you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
I don't know who to have start this out, but.
Come on up.
Yeah. Come on down, you're the next contestant. Do we have the microphone for the podium?
It's on the table.
Make sure it's on, too. Okay.
Yeah, all right, well, so to get us started, I do have a presentation that I just wanted to kind of work process some of the just like outline of what our next steps are. And then we do have a planning exercise that we'll go through in a couple of minutes, we've gone through this, so we're not sure if the best way is to access it on the.
It is on. Okay, we need another call.
Icon to up under top.
I see it. Okay, so give me one second. Um. I told more could be done on Fayette County.
Our controller is called Amy.
We're proud of ourselves for having Zoom and recorded meetings now.
So here we are, all right, so the Fayette County, I heard the plan, just to go to the next slide, I'll just go over. What we want to talk about is maybe similar discussion, not similar, but kind of highlighting some of the things that we talked about last week. Go through introductions, I want to talk about our team, what we're doing, I'd like to get just introduction from a room to room. Go through the scope of work, the project timeline, talk a little about that extended public outreach occasion. If you have a follow-up meeting after this, we're going to meet with the dedicated project team as well, it's what we're calling the LOC team, it's along our local outreach team. We're going to use them in that extended public data process. Any questions or comments that we have, we'll talk about that last step and then we'll do this exercise, so next slide.
What is, what is a local outreach comprised of? Like, how did, how did you make up?
So that team is still being built out. It is a combination of people who during the pre-survey that was put out before the conference process, sort of people that were interested or want to help out. It includes people from the New River Board of A, it also includes anybody who's been identified, you know, has gone through this process, like someone who might have access to data, some who might have access to, you know, just some local agencies, anybody that you recommend to would be helpful. We're trying to get a wide swath of participants throughout the county, so we're not done building that team, I think that's, we're still doing it over the next couple of weeks. And then we'll do a training exercise that kind of walks them through the list of comprehensive plans. Is how they can participate, what their role would be, you know, how they collect information and give that back to us so we can make sure that we consolidate that all. One, feedback, and then also just what the events are, so helping us identify possible events, locations, where we should be going, who we should be meeting with. So as comprehensive as you can possibly do that, this is really what we're looking for, because there's no really capped up number. We do want to have some local leaders for that, that local outreach teams, that's who we're meeting with this afternoon. Or actually after this meeting, but yeah, if there's anybody that you would recommend, if you want to be part of it, please, please feel free to let us know, that would be very helpful. Scope of work, so the next slide. I'm going to go through these fairly quick, so the project kickoffs, it's a process that's already been completed, so we did our set pickoffs. We're still, the only aspect of this that we're still working on is the data collection component, that's really something that's going to take time. We'll be working over that over the next, I would say over the next few months. Part of working with this local outreach team, we've already identified some data sources that are either available to us or could be available to us, so we're kind of knocking on the doors and seeing what we're able to get.
What types of data sources do you need?
So there's the standard time, I mean, if we have a partial data, which is data that we have a pretty good layer set for. I think some of the stuff that's still out there that we're working with WPU is the utility information, infrastructure information, public facilities, community facilities, so that would be like identifying where, you know, fire and safety is. Identifying where all the public schools are, identifying just those types of, I guess, like local assets. Be a hard thing to have identified at a comprehensive, statewide level. We think we have access to some of it, we think there might be opportunities that create better information over the next couple of months. But if that's something you have access to or not something that might have access to. That's something that will continue to collect data all throughout this process. The comprehensive plan branding, we've prepared a brand for this, just identify what the plan's going to just to identify kind of like a unique tag for this plan, so when people see our cloud out there, it's recognizable. We've established a project website that's up and running, I'll talk a little bit about that. I'll talk a little bit about map on social, which is also up and running. There's online county questionnaire that's out there, that's a supplement to the pre-survey. I know Jenna and her team that was out there, they got three hundred, four hundred different responses, so we're going to resend this link to those that participated. It's a bit more comprehensive, asks more questions, but that pre-survey was a good starting point. And then the DIY kids, I can talk about that more. Next slide, please. So this is the brand for the comprehensive plans, this will be on a lot of materials, next slide. This is the project website, so I can give a URL to everyone or we can share, you can put it up on the screen here when we're done talking.
I have it on our website already.
Oh, perfect, so any, any way to connect to it, that's typically how we refer someone to it, we can give it a direct link, but ideally it should go through the counties that we can track to them, so let's see what's, what's successful. But on the project website, there's a variety of things that you're able to do, you can learn about the plan. How to get involved, which that'll continue to get posted or updates as we have more events, there's news and updates. As documents will be created, we'll be posting, it was on there, very transparent, everybody's able to see the process and where we're at, be able to provide feedback. There's also a little further down the page, the DIY kids, it's okay, the DIY kids, our, it's on there. The DIY kids, there's map dot social, there's online questionnaires, there's a couple of different ways to participate. One of the examples is map dot social, this is an online mapping tool, so similar to an exercise that we would typically give in a room like this, or a larger room, where we would have people come out. And they would be able to, you know, on a big dot map exercise, you know, put a sticker here, put a comment here, this allows people to do this online, do it on yourself. Really anything that you can access browser, you're able to download an application or anything. So you're able to create your own maps if you click to the next one. So this is the example of the map as it stands now. Still wanting to get this pushed out, this is something that we, we see an opportunity over the next few months to continue to get this out there, to get more feedback from the rest of the county. And, you know, those that want to participate, maybe you don't want to participate in person, this is an option for that. This is also something that if we do in-person engagements, there's ways either on iPad or a cell phone, or even if we did it manually way. You can be filling out these, these map dot social accounts or these maps, you know, in person as well, so there might be someone who's not a tech savvy, but wants to do this, you know, someone to help facilitate that. At some kind of engagement or on a fact or, you know, a festival, whatever it might be, next slide, please. This is the survey, I won't go through the whole survey, it's, it takes about fifteen minutes to probably fill it out, I mean, it takes time to go through it. It asks several questions about housing, transportation, you know, the amenities in the community, the public services. So all these different aspects of what the comprehensive plan is going to address, it's talking about through the survey. There's questions in here that we'll also condense down and make a little bit more direct, a faster process, maybe there's five or seven questions that are important in here, and that we have one-to-one, and that's what we review at public events. So that's like another, could be a hard copy sheet, could be something that if someone has a high pad, they can throw out, so we do that low tech, we do the high tech, whatever works the best, but this way we're asking the same questions, so we can just kind of go back and say, regardless of when someone was asked this question or where they were, or the time in the process, you know, we're getting this type of feedback. And then the DIY kits, so there's a couple of different ways to participate in this process. Some people don't want to come out to the public events, some people don't want to fill things out online. The DIY kit is a way to do it yourself workshop. So you can either pick up a packet, have a packet sent to you, you can download a packet, print it off. You can conduct it virtually, so there's a lot of different ways to do this. And the concept behind the DIY kit and why we get a lot of success out of this is, you know, someone who doesn't want to come to an event can do this event from their home or at their church or, you know, at a book club, wherever they, they are typically meeting with a group of people. It's just a good way to help facilitate a discussion, just the entire process, or what it looks like, how to collect information, you know, what questions to ask.
I've got a question, what's the size of the kit, like when it's printed?
How many pages, that's your question? Oh, four pages.
I was just wondering, you know, have, have you ever sent out mass mailings and something like this?
We could, yeah, I mean, there've been communities that have wanted to, community counties that have wanted to push out. I don't know if I would, I would do the DIY kits, but it's like a postcard, you could send out a postcard that would give a link to this, we could give a link to the project website, that is something that's, that's coming.
Well, I mean, you know, I want to sensitize you to a couple of things as you're gathering this data, one is we have a large population that is not literate. We also have a large population that is not wealthy enough to own technology to access this information. And then we have people who live in places who don't have the connectivity, you know, so, you know, I think, you know, while, while this approach may work well in more urban areas or areas that aren't as mountainous or whatever, this, this is a very geographically diverse area, we have, you know, a lot of challenges. And if we're going to, if we're going to really gather data from the people who who are in the know, we're going to have to think outside of the technical, technology box to get it.
Allison, I just want to, I just want to chime in if I can, we've looked into mailers, I've talked to Abby and a few other folks about them, and I, I did some research into it, and it would cost over ten thousand dollars just to do a simple postcard to the residents of Fayette County. And so that's, you know, that's something that we can talk about, but as of right now, NRDRDA would be picking up that bill and that would be, that's a pretty big expense for.
Well, Jenna, those are the things, though, that we need to have, you know, that's the kind of thing I want to know about. I want to know that you've looked into it and I want to know the cost, so this commission can consider whether it has the funds to do something like that. And I, I saw my colleagues nodding when you were talking about expense, we know, because we've all run for office. So we, we know how much it costs to mail stuff to people in Fayette County, and we also know that it might be worth it as far as getting this information, so that's, that's the confirmation we need. Sure. To make decisions about this, because again, my point about literacy, you know, I'm a public defender, there, there are a lot of people who might not understand, I was reading the, the comp plan description at the beginning of the quiz, and I see tabulated and things like that. There are a lot of people, even, even if they aren't literate, who aren't going to understand some of the vocabulary used in that, I mean, we have to communicate at the level, you know, at, you know, high school and below level to people in general, because we want to cater to the lowest common denominator, we don't need to, you know what I mean, to try to get those participation. Because if somebody, I know of somebody who, who doesn't understand several of the words in something, they're not going to try to go through the document to fill it out, I mean, that's just the, the way it is, so, you know, I feel like, you know, if you're going to communicate with the people at Fayette County, you need to, I mean, you know, we have a lot of people who've probably, I would say our average education level is probably high school or maybe even sophomore year, just on average.
Yeah, so I think we can, we can talk about.
I mean, I think that's probably about, you know, if you look at the masses, I mean, we do have pockets of well-educated people, and we have people who graduate, but our graduation rates weren't high for the, for the people my age, you know, and in the age range that I'm talking about, now we probably have higher numbers now. But, but, you know, people who are my age, our ages, you know, are probably looking at a.
So we're talking about this from a lot of different perspectives, so there are, there are going to be some people who can fill this out, and in fact, some of them are starting to, you're right, there's a large population or a group out there that we need to come at this from a lower tech approach, which when I talk about the DIY kits, that's a big part of what the local outreach team is going to utilize, so this local outreach team is going to be helpful in getting these kids out into the public. So someone would even have to come to the project website, they'd be just be handing out these smart copy kits. I think it's just getting them to the right locations.
Yeah, like Walmart, I mean, that's where a lot of people go around here, you know, the Walmarts and the dollar stores and in the communities, those are the places that you're going to find.
Yeah, so I think our, our strategy, where originally we did have this kind of time available to us, now we're trying to focus over these next couple of months. Where are the locations for people to, what are the, the events or the meetings or the touchpoints that we, we call it a community intercept, so where do you get to, you know, the most, I guess, like disenfranchised group, where maybe they haven't had the participate, don't even know that a plan is occurring or the process is occurring. And you gave, you know, three or five minutes, somebody's time, get them involved, tell them the different ways that they participate. If you feel like they don't want to participate beyond this meeting, try to get as many of the questions as you can in front of them in that moment, I mean, there's, there's different strategies that we'll work through with this team to make sure that we're getting, you know, the most out of our, our time.
Are you giving us an overview right now and then we're going to dive deeper on this stuff, because, I mean, like I said, we, we've all run for office within the last four and a half years, so we have a pretty good understanding through experience of how to reach the people of the county through aver, you know, advertising. Like, I know I had to look into it and make decisions, which radio stations, which television, vision stations, how much money did I want to spend, how long did I want my commercial to be? You know, did I want to do mailers or not, were signs good, you know, and that sort of thing, and I, I think that, you know, we could give you some ideas on at least how to get the, the word out a little better. In, in a, in a community that, like I said, is not very well-connected, you know, there are people who probably have technology but don't have internet, I mean, you know, there's just, you know, we have a lot of kind of considerations that, you know, aren't typical.
Oh, that'd be great, and as I said, so after this meeting, we're meeting with a smaller group of project team, and then kind of the beginnings of this local outreach team, and even any information that you have or any thoughts about how we should be utilizing that group and getting the message out would be very helpful, much appreciated. I, I am just giving kind of an overview, you can stop as we're doing our.
To add on to what Commissioner Taylor was saying, we have all have had contact with newspapers, local news. We could do PSAs on, on different things, plus there's a classic rock station that we can use. I mean, there, there's just a wide variety of outlets that we have here that we've had to use in the past simply because people cannot read, but they can listen to the local news. So we have the ability to get information out, it, it's just what do you see as best using it as, so that we can get the information out quickly?
Okay, yeah, well, that would be, that would be helpful, so I think if we go through this, if there are, I know we've been talking a little bit about this, if there's sources that you think we need to be tapping into. I mean, someone on this outreach team or us could be coordinating with local news stations, you could be coordinating with radio stations, you know, whatever, whatever we think works, and I would, I would try all of it, honestly, at this point in this process, just because it's one thing when you're working in a small municipality, incorporated, pretty clear reach out process, this is different at a county level, and certainly with some of the geographic challenges, the technology challenges, the internet challenges, it's just whatever we think could work, we should, we should really be at least exploring or trying. So next steps is this community engagement process, we talked a little bit about this last week. The idea originally was we were working with this project team, we're working with this local outreach team, what we were going to do in a couple of weeks, now we're going to try it in a couple of months, which I think is a much more realistic timeline. Gives us opportunities to explore all these different things that we're, we're talking about, and I'm sure there's some other things I've never really thought about. We're at this Fayette County Commissioner's team presentation and working session right now. We're also conducting focus groups workshops and team person slash stakeholder interviews, so that's happening both remotely, in person, and any way that we can talk to people throughout the county. So that's people that are in the municipality, that are always at the periphery of the county, trying to get a kind of wide range of people to talk to. And then Trish and I are in the field today, and really this week doing reconnaissance, we're on tour, trying to see what's possible to do. We recommend we can't see everything on this trip, if they come. But we're certainly, you know, picking out destinations, if there's places, that's something we can talk about, if there's a destination, you think we need to see this, or make sure you see this, or if this is a real challenge area, be sure you get back into this part of the county, please, please feel free to let us know today, that would be helpful. We'll move into the existing conditions memo, so that's our, that's one of our next tasks, once we're just probably looking out more in like October or November. Just bringing this all together, reviewing past plans, studies, reports, not just stuff that we've done just here in the county, but also municipalities that might be looking on into what they want to do with some of their infrastructure challenges are, needs are. What some of their public facility challenges are, and then just looking at all of these different amenities that are here in the county, making sure that, you know, we're planning accordingly. We're also preparing a demographic and economic snapshot, it's just to get a better understanding of the, who lives here, you know, where do they work, where do they shop, where are they going, what, what does that look like in the future? How do we leverage some of the opportunities that might be available with, you know, like the gorge, some other employment centers? How does the comprehensive plan pull that into planning accommodations? So from there, we'll prepare this existing condition. As I said, of course, just a baseline, a general understanding of all of the challenges and opportunities that the county has. It won't have any recommendations, it won't say, you know, what we need to do, it's what we should be doing, it's really just like a homework, make sure that we know what, what we're dealing with. Then in the next steps, we'll start to transition into, you know, visioning, so that starts to get to a high level policies, and then we'll get into that condition. So next slide, please. So task four, that's okay. Task four would be visioning. This is also going to be moving through October and November, again, using the, the local outreach team, and I think we're going to try to do a couple of different strategies here, so there'll be, you know, as much in-person as we can possibly do with the events, kind of stretching them out over a couple of months. We're going to try to provide some online options too for people, but really still focusing on in-person, making sure that we have the right people that are coordinating those efforts. From that information that's gathered really over the next couple of months, definitely we'll start to prepare this, this vision statement for the county, as well as the goals. That's going to go through kind of a review process, just to make sure at a high level, we're moving in the right direction. We'll meet with the project team, we'll meet with this group to kind of go over, so this is what we heard through the existing conditions process, this is what we heard through the visioning process, and with that in mind, these are the the goals that we're trying to accomplish within the comprehensive plan. And then task five is really the preliminary plan, the elements, the, the core components, both are required by the state, but also some optional components or some additional components that we want to explore, so, you know, looking at land use, looking at transportation, looking at infrastructure, redevelopment opportunities, development opportunities. Quite, quite a variety of things that we need to cover within that overall plan. Again, that'll go through a review process, we'll meet with the project team, we'll meet with the commission. And then from there, the next slide just shows, we take this preliminary plan and it gets rolled into this larger file, so the final comprehensive plan. The components that aren't there that are coming that from the plan are zoning audit. The purpose of the zoning audit is to, you know, looking through the lens of this new updated coverage of plan, what challenges are in the current code? So where, where are they not in alignment, what do you need to do either through a series of smaller amendments that you might need to, to make to the, to the current code? Could be larger ones, like building standards, whatever it might be, U standards. The comprehensive plan recommendations will guide the zoning changes that we recommend. So we won't change your code, that's not really what this project's about, but we will identify that kind of base, and we've been here from public and local, we've been here through this process, these are recommendations we provide to that process and post-adoption. And again, then we just kind of go through the process, we go through.
Let me say, do you make recommendations based on your work in other communities about how we might develop incentives for developers to come in?
We can explore that, for sure, I mean, that would be, and maybe as we get through, when we get to the draft, probably in step five. I think we'll have a, a general understanding of things that the zoning book might want to address, that might be something that we can talk about at this group, is, you know, we feel like there's some opportunities to look at this, or this, or this, so how do you incentivize, you know, development in some areas, how do you make sure that you're being restricted, it really just depends on the feedback that we're getting, so I, I don't know what we're going to say yet, but I know that we have a lot of strategies from other communities or times that we've worked in. Yeah, but we're not really ready to, but we, we do that, so we do understand what those challenges are, but realistically, you should be probably looking at what's a short-term goal versus a long-term goal. So just the, the project timeline, if you want. So we talked about this, just extending that public outreach, so this will give us an opportunity to work with the local outreach team. We can add additional events and meetings in November, any, any feedback that you have about how we can better engage the, the county. Certainly, that's part of what we're here to do today, and talk about today. The next slide shows the new, this might be tough, oh, this is just a, so by extending this, I mean, what we were hoping to do over, you know, two to three weeks in the original timeline, we're now hoping to do over two, three months. It's a, a much more, I think, realistic timeline, it gives us opportunity to do more than what we were able to do originally. Ideally, these are the phases, I think it's going to be a little bit more, won't be this clean, but I mean, ideally, these are the different things that we're moving through, we'll at least capture all of this over the next three months. I think we'll do, you know, like the collateral blitz, probably is going to start here in the next few weeks, but it's going to be, you know, mainly out there in October, and again, that's whatever we can do to, you know, we're posting our flyers at Walmart or we're posting a flyer anywhere that people are at. Just to get people's attention about this process and ways that they can participate, you know, we'll be sure that we're, we're doing it. So the, the three phases are, we're here, we're doing the process, we're, we're meeting with the local outreach team, we want to spin this local outreach team up in the next couple of weeks, I think that's a pretty good component to get it, then evolve and get it, helping us, you know, see as much as we possibly can, engage as much as we possibly can. Phase two through October is the collateral blitz, distribute as many DIY kits as we can possibly get out there, you know, working with these focus groups, conducting additional team person interviews, and then joining any regularly scheduled meetings. Mission meeting, it could be elected officials meeting, it could be, you know, public agency, I mean, really any meeting that we feel like someone from our team could just drop in and steal five, 10, 15 minutes. That's what we want to do, that's just one strategy, you know, also going to grocery stores and cafes and restaurants and events, wherever we can get ourselves in front of people. That we are part of what's in October and November, and that kind of immersive outreach, so take this to people, don't wait for people to come to us. Which is by design what the website does, and that, and it works for some people, but there's, there's, we know to do this outreach the way it needs to be done, to get out to the people, so that's maybe a big part of our, our next three months. And then the county-wide visioning workshops, and depending on where we're at, how we want to conduct those, there's different strategies, and then just keeping people engaged, you know, anybody who does participate. For the most part, they would like to know that they've been heard, they want to make sure that what they've said is getting built into our recommendations or our process, so I can keep them engaged, you know, sending periodic updates or posting up again flyers, whatever that might be about where we're at, process, or things that we're, we're showing them next one. Next slide. So I know that might be tough to see, but essentially, we're taking what was going to happen in August and September and extending out, so what's happening really in the orange, that task two, and what's happening in task five is being pulled out over, you know, September, October, and November, gives us a, a realistic timeline of the outreach that we can be conducting, how are we going to get out there. Gives us a, a realistic timeline of the outreach that we can be conducting, how we're going to get out there. Not pausing anything, just giving ourselves a little bit more time to reach out. And that's, that's our, that's our approach. So next slide. So next steps, these are the more, really more immediate next steps. We're conducting field work. We're going to continue this time by a study area tour. Right now, Trish and I are conducting keepers interviews sort of in field where we're able to do that. We also have people back in our office who are also conducting keepers interviews remotely. We have stakeholder meetings that are going to continue to hold. So if there's a key stakeholder that you feel like we just, we need to engage, we need to talk to them. You know, maybe starting to pull together that, that would be very helpful for us. The public engagement through November, again, forming this local outreach team. We can take people on really at any point through this process. So if someone comes to us in October, they didn't miss the deadline, that's great. I mean, you still have a couple of weeks to, to get this, this word out. And even though we kind of snap a chalk line in terms of the summary of all this feedback in November, you know, through, through March, as we're preparing this plan, we're still going to want the word out there. We're still going to want people to participate, give us feedback. So this is really like a, a through March role for the local outreach team. So at any point, some of them will participate. We'll conduct some outreach training over the next few weeks. We'll identify upcoming events and public meetings. Get that list, get it all together. We can coordinate with this group and just say, this is the list that we have. We're going to start assigning local outreach teams. You know, what did we miss? What do you think we should focus on? Are there other aspects that we should consider? I think the news and the radio component can be very helpful. Just get like a short word about there about what this, what this process is and what we're trying to accomplish. And then we'll be working on the distant conditions memo. Part of that is just, again, reviewing those fact planes. We compile the recommendations from the 2001, 2011 conference of plan. And then preparing the demographic and economics. I believe that takes us to the end of this presentation. We do have an exercise that we wanted to work on with the group. It's sort of an example of the kind of process that we'll be doing, you know, throughout the next couple of weeks. But any questions, comments, suggestions you have, I think we should pause here and take those down. Make sure we're getting our notes.
First, there's not as much traffic here as there is in Chicago. So congratulations on that. We have 10 different municipalities that we can reach out to to try to help you get the words out faster because we each represent the municipality. We have, we have a wide variety of diversity. We have a lot of folks that have come in, have run very successful businesses. We have some that have been here that's run successful businesses. As far as teams, I know that, that there's an existing team. Would you like to see more participation by more variety of folks? Or just use your team that you currently have in place to help you with everything?
I can answer that probably, John. We've had 17 people respond to a volunteer signup sheet for the local outreach team and that's still available online. And so we're meeting with some of those folks today. We've got volunteers from every district and some really active and excited ones. So I'm feeling pretty good about the local outreach team so far. I did invite you all to that meeting at 11 o'clock today, if you'd like to get to know some of the volunteers.
Okay, thank you.
No.
No, I just.
Right now.
John Taylor, I, I just texted June and asked her, but I don't know if she got it or not. John Taylor is a property owner of Nutall. I think it's Nutall Properties. And they have approximately 14,000 acres here in Fayette County. And a lot of that property is up around the Meadow River Bridge on the, on the Nicholas County line in the Fayette County, all the way to 60. And some of it goes out to Babcock. And they are interested in developing that property. And there's another property owner is right there at 60 that the property runs all the way down to, I should put this down. It's also on my team also. They're developing property there. So I mean, that, that's a large property owner that would, I think they're willing to invest and develop some of that property. I don't know whether you've been in contact with them or maybe not. I mean, not at this point, because that would be a great person to reach out to. Okay.
If you want us, I can reach out. We can follow up with you.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. I'll go ahead and send it to.
Okay, yeah, maybe just include Jenna on that. So we talked a little bit about different strategies in terms of outreach. And I, I don't think it's a hundred percent, well, I know we're not a hundred percent worked out like what we want to do and what our focus is going to be. So then if you have to this meeting or if you think about it over the next couple of days, if there's just different ways that you think we should be doing our, you know, what's been successful as you. Please, please feel free to send that information to us. That would be helpful. Any other comments, suggestions?
Not right now. Can we take a short break?
If it's okay with.
Yeah, talk with us.
Okay, let's take a 10 minute break. Where people need to go.
Our next exercise will probably be 30 minutes. I mean, the most, and it's just a sort of an example with a larger group, it's a little bit more dynamic, but I think you'll be helping with this group.
Yeah, but. Well, we're all about the same age and some of us speak the fastest, we're more than.
Oh, you know what? I got it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Amen. Yeah. Yep. I'm on.
All right, let's get back to our presenters.
One thing, the next time we have a presentation, I don't know to whom I should be directing the comment, but I would like copies of the slides so I can make notes on the slides and then refer back to them. Because I don't want to trust myself to put this sticky in the right spot that I can find it. Okay, thanks. I like the ones where you have the slide and then you have the lines where you can write.
Yeah, the comments.
Yeah, where you have like three to six to a page or something, Amy.
Yeah.
You can do that through PowerPoint.
Well, but she has a PDF, so it's she, he would have to give it to her in a format where she could print it that way. I don't know if PDF will print it that way.
Perhaps he could send it.
Yeah.
We're sorry, but we're very bad with names.
You didn't do introduction. Yes.
Yes.
So Christian and I are really the two planners that lead the projects on our side and on the customer's side. So that's the firm that we work for.
What is your last name, Nick?
Davis. But on our team, not here right now, we have a core of like six other people. So we have Ruben Shaw, who's also working on this. I can send out an email. It'll be in the PowerPoint too. So Ruben Shaw, also a planner specializing in research and zoning. We have Sue John, who's also helping us with a lot of our GIS analysis, pulling this data together, helps with a lot of mapping. And then Michio and Amari specialize in market demographic economics at our firm. So they're helping us with the demographic and economic profile. And then John also is also leads, he's one of the co-founders. He's also serving just kind of oversight on the project. He has a lot of experience working in coverage plans for communities, for counties, for regions. We have a pretty comprehensive team in our office for this and then coordinating with Jenna and her team, bringing up all these other agencies here in the county. It's really kind of a team effort, but the quality will probably be seen as me to look at myself and Tricia. So that's, that's our team. If you want to restore on there. I know you know all.
I'm Tom Malice, this is County Commissioner, of course. John Brenneman, County Commissioner.
And I'm Allison Taylor. I'm also a county commissioner. I, just so you know, well, you know that John is the commissioner who's representing us on the project team, right?
Is it John?
That Tom, I mean, Tom is. I was just like, whoa, yeah. Yeah, and we're, I mean, we're all from different areas of the county, but we're all natives. We grew up here. And we have different connections. Tom's a local business owner. John has worked in construction and managed and you can tell him whatever else. I'm, I left 23 years and came home. I was in the military and I've been back since 2013. And I have insight into some of the issues just by virtue of being an assistant prosecutor, public defender here, because I work a lot with, you know, our community in those ways. And I'll help you out here. Ruth Lanier is our county administrator. That means that she runs the county's business. She's in charge of all of the offices that aren't underneath an elected official. So, and that includes our resource office, which is led by Gabriel Pena right there. And Abby Newell is in that office. I know you've worked with both of them. So whenever they are Ruth's staff, Angela is our zoning officer, zoning planning. And she also is under Ruth's umbrella, which is under us. Amy Dangerfield right there is our executive assistant. Don't underestimate the amount of information that Amy could give you because she's been here the longest. She's very well educated. We're lucky to have her. She's one of the best writers we have, including all of us. I mean, lots of experience and, and she's been in this community a long, long time. So that's, that's who we have here as far as the participants in the process are concerned.
Go right in there. So this exercise in front of you that I want to go through is similar to the types of questions that we would ask folks.
One thing that, that we would like, and Commissioner Taylor, Allison, we all usually go by first names, but Allison had an interesting take on, if we can get a copy of your PowerPoint, just send that to either Ruth or Amy and they'd be able to print it out for us. And, and just do it so that we have the slides on the left and then the notes that we could take on the right. Yeah, it makes it easier for us and that way we don't forget something that's important.
I want to be able to refer back to it. So when we have our next update, I want to be able to look back at the notes I made from this update and, and kind of so I can track the progress and ask my questions.
Right after this meeting, I'll, we'll PDF it. We'll send that off to everyone that I can and then I'll get it to you. We're going to print it off.
Just so you guys, so you guys know, Amy, Amy just messaged me and I'll, I'll take care of getting you guys his slides from today. They'll go to Amy.
Yeah, and then just in the future, we'll be sure to get it out to you before, you know, when we print it when you get here. Sometimes we'll make some changes on the file, but certainly as you sit down. And certainly as you start rolling out actual documents for review, I don't want to present stuff live. I think that's too much to digest, so we'll be sure to get that probably a week in advance. If it's something that's a little bit more complex or a lot of content, it might be two weeks in advance. Any more than that, when people don't really give it, but it definitely be anywhere between a week to two weeks to be changed to contribute with your. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, sure. All right, so this exercise, do me a favor. We're going to go through, there's, there's four questions. Don't jump ahead. We're going to go one question this time. We're going to do this as a group. And as I was saying, this exercise, we need to do this 30, 40, 50 people, 150 people. So with this, this group, it's going to be a little bit different, but we just wanted to give you a sense of what it feels like when we conduct these meetings. And some of the challenges that we hear sometimes are, you know, well, the same two people are very vocal. And the way we conduct this workshop, everybody that wants to talk gets an equal opportunity to talk. And I think that's an important aspect of the way we conduct our outreach and the way that we're trying to engage people. It's very similar to the questions that's built into the MI kit. So what I'll do is have you go through and just identify five issues or concerns facing Fayette County. So I'll give you a couple of minutes to fill that out. Don't jump to number two. I'll watch and make sure nobody's.
I'm not cheating. I'm just not right.
Yeah, you gotta write something down. We're gonna call it. But do write it down. And for two reasons, we want to write it down. One, just to kind of formulate maybe some of your thoughts. The other thing is we collect these. And even as we conduct this and you're going to hear, this group is probably won't be so much an issue, but when you have a large group of people, we're going to go around the room and everybody's going to tell us what one of their issues. There are some people who will not say an issue. They see their neighbor across the way from them or they just don't feel comfortable saying it. So we collect the sheets and not only are we going to evaluate the information that's given to us and that we write down on this post-it note, but also we'll do a more complete overview of what's been written down. You'll see just some things don't make it to the board sometimes because some are wasn't comfortable. Please do write it down. Another minute. Just write down a couple of issues. All right. And so what we'll do is I'm going to start, just start right down here. We'll kind of round the room. So if you want to give us, just name one issue or concern facing Fayette County.
I'll just go ahead and start us right out with education.
Education, okay. And when you say education, can you maybe just slightly elaborate on that, like what you mean?
It has gotten better in the last few years. I think the board is working towards it. But there are still issues. Retaining teachers, graduating students, facilities have gotten better.
Okay, so education, you know, retaining teachers.
And that's not exactly something the county commission can take care of, but it is something that.
Either like curriculum.
Can you guys read that?
That's good. You know, better facilities or improving facilities.
It's just not funded. It's not well-funded in this county or in this state in general. But, but in this county in particular, that was one of the things I was alluding to when I talked about the education levels and stuff, even those who did receive high school educations. We didn't have advanced math and science at my school until my senior year, and it was advanced in air quotes. I mean, we finally got calculus. We finally got biology two and chemistry two. We didn't have any of that prior to my senior year at high school.
Yeah, or would you say, so just education in general? Improving facilities. And so we're just gonna, we're gonna generalize what's being said, and then we'll, we'll take what you're writing down and put that into this overall summary.
Infrastructure, water and sewer.
Infrastructure, so water and sewer. Infrastructure, water and sewer.
I didn't want to say, I didn't want to take too much because I don't think there's much more.
Water, sewer, and that, and just in general, like making connections, making sure that, you know, a lot of, a lot of the development opportunities that's out there is very much dependent on infrastructure, water and sewer being.
That's right.
That's an important, that's an important aspect of what we need to do in the land. But if you, yeah.
No, I'm glad I got to go second. It's, it's hard just to pick one because.
Come back around each other.
All right, let's, uh, let's go with local transportation.
Okay, local transportation. And so is that, when you say local transportation, are you seeing traffic?
Public transportation.
No, I'm, I'm taking like public transportation.
Okay.
Like a, a bus line or a small tourist type bus line.
Okay.
That could all do with transportation.
That's great.
Because we're just having the national park named here. We're going to have a lot more guests coming in.
We have congestion in our trailheads.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Yeah. And, and do you see that trailhead some significant challenges like parking? So you're trying to get congestion there? Sure, okay.
Yes.
Poverty.
Poverty.
I actually had trouble coming up with five because I feel like all of them had a nexus to infrastructure, education, poverty.
Yeah, some of them might feel like symptoms. They may not be true issues. They're a result of maybe some of these larger.
Right.
Larger true issues, yeah. Okay.
Well, like substance abuse. I was trying to think of the, like our unemployment rate, you know, those kind of things all kind of fall under poverty.
That's a great, that's a great point.
The, my rate took mine.
There again, okay, that's fine. And that's fine. And that'll, that'll happen. So.
Housing.
Housing, okay.
That's a good one.
And so for, for housing, you can write, so we'll write housing, but then we're rethinking the quality of the current housing stock, the need for additional housing, the different types. Yes, all, all the topics, okay. Because that is, that isn't a challenge. When we talk about housing, there's the, the quality, the condition of the current housing stock, where it's located, you know, what it's, you know, bizarre. And then we start thinking out ahead of, what are, what's the demand? What's the need for additional housing? What product types are people still looking for, single family, detached, which is a true example of home? Do you want multifamily? Do you want something a little bit more dense? That's other thing. All right, housing, go ahead.
I guess dilapidated housing, we do have a lot of property, but it has dilapidated housing on it, so we can't, so I would say.
Develop it.
I, I, I would say that's different. Yeah, so that's a six. And I would say dilapidated housing.
Oh God, someone spelled that for me, please. We all have spells we date. Yeah, we all know, but I.
Someone has to say aesthetic, that's always a good one. So, yeah, so dilapidated housing, and this is something that we've already, a couple of people that we've talked to, even leading up to this and as we've been here, just the challenge in documenting dilapidated housing, how to address that, is an enforcement issue. Even knowing if they're vacant versus if people are living in it, there's sometimes a real challenge in need to eliminate that distinction.
Yeah, ours is probably the backend, the funding to remove. We've got all the front stuff, it's still getting better.
Well, and, and it has several implications. It's not just, you know, whether we can, with regard to developing those properties as housing, but, but other developments, we just had, had a complaint or I have, I've read it right here, where it's on the way to somewhere full and people have to pass all of this broken down, you know, just basically piles of junk on their way to a beautiful, you know, resort or something. I mean, that's, we just don't have, and, and I know, you know, in bigger places, there's zoning that takes care of that or, you know, HOAs, which I hate by the way, but, but here, you know, you can have a very beautiful home or business right next to, you know, somebody who, yeah, dump, somebody who has appliances on their porch.
Believe it or not, it's not only here. When you go to Tennessee.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, in impoverished areas. That's just.
I went to Tennessee, camp cabins in Tennessee, drive through an area. I'm not going to mention any names. Drive through an area and you go up and expensive cabins. So I mean, it's, it's, it's everywhere.
Yeah, it's just in states with poverty. Tennessee has a lot of poverty.
Well, and certainly that can also be a distinction between district area and county area. You get onto the county, just the rules are different, there's less enforced. I cited the housing, but we'll add on there skilled workforce. Okay, skilled workforce.
At the end of this, we'll be able to ask you some questions, right?
Yes. Okay, so we can move, we're going to sweep that up somewhere. All right, all right. They're spacing out a little different there toward the bottom.
I know.
Um, I would say healthcare and kind of access to the agency of, and I felt the question was like human access.
Okay, so healthcare, access to do. Those might be two different issues, but I think, I think, I mean, you can see how they're sort of interplaying.
They all kind of tie together. I mean, part of that is there's not public transportation to get people to the doctor. There's, you know, not money to pay for the public transportation for the people who want to get to the doctor. And then there's a general distrust of healthcare. Not money to pay for the public transportation for the people who wanna get to the doctor, and then there's a general distrust of healthcare.
You might have a second one, yeah.
Well, I think we can have a second or third or fourth.
Oh, okay, um, are you able to do?
I can kind of zoom this thing.
Oh, I could get a little stick.
Put some number on like.
Why do we? No, come on, it's the Halloween.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's good.
Hey, watch out, we'll have it going around. You gotta fix your hair there, buddy. Get a, get a zoomer to fix that. Wait, he's trying to fix his hair now.
Alright, um, okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna keep going around, so we're gonna come back to you, if you don't have another comment, if you've captured one of these, that's okay, um, if you have another comment you wanna add?
Um, just the capacity to deal with the influx of, um, towards from national park sites.
Oh, okay, so capacity to deal with, number nine, capacity to deal with.
And that could just be basically infrastructure, um, generally, but.
Is that also like a human, I mean, like having.
Yeah, add extra people, um, extra resources.
Yeah, like Ruth mentioned workforce at all, not just a skilled workforce, but a willing and available workforce.
Yeah. Uh, I would say capacity to handle tourists, um, visitors, and I, I would say that's both, you're right, and visitors. And I would say, you know, maybe in. Brackets, that would be also, that's infrastructure. And actual, you know, how many people. Infrastructure and staff.
Now, I'm going off the chart here, I guess, but capability of defining developable properties.
Okay, so defining, okay, so the ability to, can I say, like, the ability to identify. Developable areas?
Yeah.
Okay, ability to identify developable areas, and then, um, I mean, there are, there are tools out there that. You could use that would help us identify, and I mean, you could do that through the assessor data.
Well, I was gonna talk to you about that at the end of this.
Okay, perfect, yeah, like assessing the home value versus the land value, that's, that's a good indicator to know.
Well, I was talking about a, just a piece of property that can be utilized to put a hotel on, or to, that, a piece of property that, i- if, if I was from out of state and I wanna come here. And I wanna start a business, I wanna, I'm a developer, I wanna put a business here.
Yep.
Just looking at, on the map of properties, which I'll talk more about that, and see what, yeah.
Yeah, and then that's, that could be greenfield development, that infill development, that redevelopment, I mean, there's a lot of different, a lot of ways to do it, okay, that makes sense.
Trash around the county.
Okay, trash, so.
Garbage.
Just start with like trash pickup, or?
No, people won't pay for trash pickup, they'd rather go and throw it over the hill and laugh as it goes down.
Gotcha, alright, so just.
Trash.
Trash, trash, around or throughout county, alright.
We have a, one mayor in the, in the county that has the biggest trash pile around, and he's trying to get everybody to clean up his town, if he don't trust his, he don't touch his, so.
Uh, government funding.
Okay. Government funding, uh, do you wanna elaborate just where?
Sure, I mean, we, some of our original sources of, of income are drying up. From our coal severance and coal reallocated funds, um, you know, we give so much to the federal government, and then we have to beg for it back in the form of grants. And, you know, I learned through this process that every time we, you know, subscribe to a grant, for example, to fix a historical building, like our memorial building. We are giving property interest to the government, federal government, and our county property, just for help in restoring this, I mean. This, this county is not well funded compared to other counties in the state with greater populations. And then comparatively, this state is probably one of the most poorly funded states from a federal level, and we, you know, if you read any survey of goodness. Out there, um, except for possibly quality of life in some ways, you're gonna see West Virginia at number fifty, we usually compete with Alabama and Mississippi. For the last three, but we are not very well funded, because if you look a lot, at a lot of these issues, you know, there's been no focus on our industry here. That's probably a different item, but, um, you know, we, we were run solely off of the coal industry, but that has dried up. And so now we have poverty, we don't have the structure here, and nobody's prioritized sending the money here. So when I tell people, the reason we can't fix a bridge that would give a handful of people access across the river that was a very. You know, I don't even know how they justify building it when they built it, but now we can't fix it. And when people say why, well, okay, do we fix this bridge that serves six people, or do we fix this bridge that serves thousands? And, and so that's what's happening now, so when people look at West Virginia, we're that, that bridge that served six people. You know, we had a much worse, um, water poisoning than Flint, Michigan, but it didn't make the national press in the way Flint, Michigan did. I mean, a lot of our people were poisoned and it was out of pure negligence, in my opinion, but, you know. It was a blip on the press and then it went away, and you still hear about Flint, I read the national press every single day. That's just kind of the nature of the beast, so we are not getting the funding, we don't have the attention, we don't rank on the national scale. And as a county, we don't, until this national park designation came, we were not getting attention at the state level, but I think we could have ensured it.
So I think, uh, a lot of, a lot of things are impacted through government funding, and then, I think, you sort of mentioned this, maybe, uh, you know, building up the, the tax base, it's also. Important aspect of what this plan needs to talk about, is what opportunities are there to fill up your tax base, so you do have a little bit more.
Development.
Yep.
Development, that's it. Now, I can add to that traffic thing, I just found this out in the last couple of weeks by doing some research. West Virginia is the number two ranked state. Amongst all the states with paved roads, if we were to take every paved road and just make a straight line. We actually have more paved roads, well, the only state that meets this is Texas. So we have actual more paved roads than California does, New York has. And that's one of the reasons why we can't keep up the roads as well as some of the other places.
Well, it's probably because we have to go around everything.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we always say they follow the snake around the road and.
Right, like GPS will tell you you're taking a right turn and it's just a curve, you know, it's, it's that curve.
Okay, that's, that's sort of a point. The, your one?
I only have one, it's, I just noticed it in the last few months, and I guess it falls back to the fact that being with tourists and visitors. A lot of the tourists that we have coming now don't have any work during animal, they'll have a lot of people call, say they want to start up a new, like, dog boarding, like it's daytime. We have a lot of tourists come, they keep their animals in the hotel, but not, but I'm sure there's other things that tourists don't have as far as facilities.
Yeah.
We only have like one drive, you know, we don't have a lot of other things.
Well, we were, we were just talking about that, I, I, we're curious with what we're hearing in terms of interest of tourists, you know, where are there amenities? Are there additional amenities that obviously, are there businesses that are catering toward the tourists? And is that even something that the county wants to, so that's, I mean, balancing that catering to tourists, but also not losing your, your own identity, that's. So I think just, um, businesses, I would say thirteen would be like businesses. Catering to tourists.
We have brush on place, for home repair places, so, I'm here for a week, it happens.
Yeah.
There's some new self, cellphone repair places in Beckley.
In the county.
Yeah.
And I would imagine that number thirteen would, would elicit some. Different opinions, I mean, depending who you talk to, some people probably don't wanna get involved in this, and then some people, there's a real opportunity to put a business around it, so.
I've just had like fifteen calls about wanting to be dog boarding.
I would do like, uh, brackets, I E, parentheses, I E, dog boarding, it's like that. Anything in the back? I think we're, we're long, okay?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and that's maybe, I mean, you kind of, you've got a stall line, this is land use, protecting and preserving the reason that people need to come here, for our natural resources, but balancing that. With amenities and businesses so that, you know, you have reasons and places for them to go. For example, in Fayetteville, like we made series, um, a popular best conference now, like other ones just left. We don't have enough places for these people to stay and eat when they return, so putting an extra burden on the resources that we have.
Okay, yeah, so I think just balancing the, the land uses and preserving the, the natural environment. Alright, we can go maybe one more time around and then we'll, we'll move on again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I can give you mine, and there are two also.
Yeah.
Signage. Our, our signage is horrible, and if you're not a local, uh, they don't know where to go to for, to look at a trail, or to. Go fishing, or bike riding, or anything like that, so desperate need for si- signage. The food establishments, if we would have a bus come in from New York into our area, we don't have. A food establishment large enough for to feed three hundred people.
Okay.
Uh, and then lodging.
I know there's, there's additional locations where people wanna talk about, but I, I think that is something we should do, sorry, let's, let's keep those in order to, broadband. It's signage, sixteen was signage, are you talking about business signage, you're talking about many signage?
Well.
Kind of affect certain.
I, I just think that trails, uh, climbing, rappelling, uh, everything needs to be signage, and maybe you keep our signage consistent.
Yes.
So people know what to look for.
And then, uh. Lodging. And I, I would say those two might go together, and that, that's a broader niche discussion too, but I would say lodging, restaurants.
Just, I see things in a, like a, I see the umbrella issues, and I see a lot of sub issues under here, but our, our geography makes. Things diff- difficult for the county, I mean, whether it's, and that's something that we can't change, but it's something we can try to accommodate when we do studies, you know. There are some places where broadband might not, or broadband at least as far as burying, um, pipe and things like that, might not be the answer, I mean. Towers may be the answer in some areas, things like that, but.
I mean, there's other, there's other ways to, how that's.
Right, and the size of our county is, is huge, we have probably one of the most geographically diverse and, and largest counties in the state.
Square miles wide.
Square miles wise, and also, you know, where we have, you know, this is the plateau, but we're up the mountain from the valley, you know, and then Meadow Bridge and Danies are up the mountain from here. So we just have a lot of geographic diversity that contributes to a lot of these problems, but I don't think we've been very innovative. But one that came to my mind is industry, we, we talk a lot about the tourist industry here, because that's what we have left.
Yeah.
Coal is left, we need another industry.
Okay.
I mean, we need to retrain, um, our coal miners and, and folks who are blue collar labors by choice, a lot of times. Because they made more money that way than if they had gone to college and come back and tried to work in a government job or something, so. We have those labors, we have people in this county who could fix anything, I mean, it's just remarkable, and there's a large number of people who could just fix anything, because. Nobody can afford to go to, you know, to a garage to get their car fixed, you know, they fix it themselves. So we really need some kind of industry here in addition to the tourist industry to help complement the tourist industry, because it, it comes in waves. And, you know, the national park will carry us to an extent, the whitewater and the natural beauty will carry us to an extent, but that season's six months long.
Right.
And at best, and, and we really just need something else to, to sustain the people who are here, who are here full time.
Yeah, I think that's a good, uh, industry, I mean, just. Attracting new industries.
And that was the one item, it was more twenty eleven, every district that was manufacturing, that was the main item that was.
If we could tie into our, our local resources and have a sporting industry here that could make. Snowboard, skis, helmets, that type of industry coming in, that would help drive. Not only the local economy, but also the tours coming in.
Okay, that's a great, uh.
Two thousand nineteen, there was that conversation happening about the outdoor economy, how do we shift conversation from tourism to more. Of the manufacturing associated with the outdoor recreation, so how do we foster more of those businesses that are creating those, which is creating the next set of gear, that's what you wanna be crazy about. Looking at National North Carolina and how the outdoor gear manufacturers are able to take hold and make that a stronghold for east coast manufacturer.
Oh, yeah, I mean, my paddleboards are from Colorado.
Sure.
I mean, you know.
This is an amazing research, research in the development area, so the outdoor economy that we have here is very unique. Um, we have extremely close access compared to Asheville, Colorado, um, and I can go on and on, this is an industry I like to work in, but, um. We do have a great opportunity.
I mean, we work quite a bit, I think we talked about it even in, we do quite a bit of work in Colorado, and then the, there are communities that have built their entire identity around. You know, being local fabricators or local manufacturers, outdoor tourism, I mean, that's a big aspect of what they've, they've really shifted gears in the last ten years to focus on. There's some, there's some, you know, like, short-term solutions, there's some long-term plays that you need to do, those are all things that, in the countywide level, you can definitely.
And we need some programming to, to help people get started in businesses like that too, I mean, we just don't have that, um, we have, you know. And I, and in some ways, I feel like we have too many things, like we have, people have these little niches, like we have the hive, which helps small business owners to some extent. But I think we need a county program where the county says, okay, yeah, we really need that kind of business, you know, we, we wanna create a program where we could give loans, or, you know, something. Assuming we have money, which we don't, but, but if we did, you know, I, I think we need to explore things like that and start planning more strategically, because a lot of. What I noticed, and I read, um, just only four years of our, our commission meeting minutes before I ran for office, but. I noticed that there was a, a trend of, um, not reassessing when, when we have made bad investments, kept investing, pouring good money after bad. Were just determined to see things through, even though the plan was twenty years old and it wasn't reaping any rewards, or coming to fruition, there were changes in the economy, I had been crashing two thousand eight, there were things that happened. That prohibited some of that from coming to fruition, and it wasn't reevaluated at any point, we just kept spending. The other things that we haven't done are, like, created a savings, you know, some, like, banking money in order to be able to fund certain things. You know, and looking at that, we also were more, kind of, you know, living paycheck to paycheck, basically, we, you know, somebody came and said, I need. I always use this example, but, you know, fifty barn cats, um, for the barn that benefits just me and my two neighbors, and they're a hundred dollars a barn cat, can I have the money? And they're like, well, if we have that kind of money, get your barn cats. Instead of looking at a more strategic plan, how are we going to, um, invest in the community, because everybody pays taxes. So, um, but only a small, you know, group, and you can look around the county and see which areas have benefited from those taxes, and this one is, is the prime one. Having grown up here, when we were younger, all the municipalities were thriving except Fayetteville. Fayetteville had, uh, and it was the county seat, but it had a Gino's downtown, and that was it, it had one restaurant, couple of things off around nineteen here. I'm not saying that's preferable for Fayetteville, but what I'm saying is, you know, we, we had a habit of not putting money into other parts of the county. And, and as a result, and same thing, not investing, not doing maintenance on our buildings, and then we end up with a catastrophic expenditure, because we weren't maintaining them well. So, anyway, I guess a better sense for. So, anyway, I guess a better sense for strategic planning and prioritizing is, is something that we need at least at this level. You know, and that's kind of what we were looking at, looking to you guys for in this plan because we've, we've agreed, we've, we've got all these funds coming in from the American Relief Plan and things. And we're not interested in, in spending it until we have some recommendations from your group on how we might, you know, prioritize and spend it most effectively, um, to benefit the people of this county. We can't, we've got tourists coming in, but we've had some comments from people, you know, forget the tourists. Um, we don't have drinking water. That's a fact. And, and we have those responsibilities to the people who live here and who will ultimately, they and their families will sustain the tourist industry over time. We need to make sure that they stay.
Yeah, as we talked about, well, there's a couple of things in there again that we can kind of pull out and address. But the strategic recommendations about where you should prioritize and your funding, I mean, that's a big part of what I think comprehensive plan should do. So certainly that'd be an aspect that we'll, we'll be addressing. And then like the idea of, you know, establishing the industries that you think you want to target or that you'd like to at least explore and then setting up an incubator program that, you know, either tie into one that already exists or a couple that exists, or the county has their own, or whatever it might be, but just making sure that that's all, um, a consideration and, and maybe have a little bit of ability that again, upon.
Well, and I'm not sure there's much we can do about this, but a lot of times, you know, we may have money. Ruth is also our, um, kind of our CFO on top of being our CEO. And, you know, we'll get money in, like we just had this big check presented to us the other day, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And that's a lot in county dollars. And, um, and of course the public's like, great, now we can fund this and we can fund that. Well, the answer is nope. Almost all of it is earmarked for certain things. We can only spend on, you know, emergency services or, you know, at, at least it's emergency services and not something that's not useful. We have one dollar out of all that money, one that could go to general funding. And so it, you know, it's just that, but that, that, that illustrates, when we got that list, that just illustrates our story right here because there are lots of things. So we need to know creative ways to spend money we have that's earmarked for other things. I don't know if there's ways to go back in and request, you know, allowances or if there are ways to, um, you know, um, design our projects that will, you know, at least have enough of a nexus to the, how the funding should be. You know, I know in the federal government, if we could tie it to terrorism, we'd be needing for just about anything after nine eleven, but.
Similarly, if you can tie some of the transportation improvements, it, it opens up a much wider, uh, kind of funding source.
Well, so that's the, but see, I didn't know that. So that's the kind of information like we need to know. Like what, where are there sources of funding where we might be able to address some of these issues? And how can we, you know, um, craft our, you know, our proposal or whatever we're, you know, our, our request, our application to, to make us an attractive source for that.
All right. So I think for this, the sake of this exercise, there's a lot more we could do with the group. Um, but just so we can move on, just so you can get kind of a flavor of what the rest of this would be. So what we would ask now from the, the public and everybody who's had an opportunity to give their, their thoughts is look at question number two.
Three most is four legs, right? Out of the twenty-six hundred we've got.
Yes, out of the twenty-six hundred we identified. So, but out of the eighteen that we identified, for the most part, if you can read it, let me know. Just go through here and you don't need to rewrite them, but just list the three that you think are most important based on all of the, the points that we've identified. Doesn't have to be your point. Um, you know, what out of these eighteen, put them in order, that's important, this is important.
Oh, okay.
Just write, you could just write down.
I'm sorry, I, I'll read, uh, one, two. Yeah, I cheated, yeah, three.
And see if we can read this out, you know, uh, number one, repeat.
I dropped my shirt with you, so, okay.
And then so what we would do is, Trish, if you can hit the red marker first, um, just go around the room real quick. So who had number, who had number one? Go ahead and raise your hand for T, teachers.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Sorry.
And that's, and that's okay. And so, so, uh, nothing for that. That's good. And so again, it might be a zero, doesn't mean it's not an issue we're going to address. It just means it might not be one of the priorities. Again, we're trying to like zero in on priorities. Um, who had number two? So infrastructure, water and sewer. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? Yeah, eight. And who had number three? Local transportation, uh, and public transportation. So one. Uh, number four, poverty. And then number five, housing.
I had that, but I left that listed on number three of number two.
That's okay. So one, two, three, four, all right. Uh, and then who had number six, dilapidated home? Who had, uh, number seven, skilled workforce? One, two, three, okay. And who had number eight, healthcare, access to healthy food? And then, uh, number nine, capacity to handle tourists, visitors, infrastructure and stuff. Number ten, the ability to identify developer, uh, or developable properties.
That was me.
But did it, did it make your list?
It, it, well, it, it all goes, in fact, infrastructure development and housing.
Yeah, I agree.
So I mean, that's the way I got this infrastructure development and housing.
Okay, all right. So we're, okay, we're good.
Is that a one?
It's a one, yep. Uh, number eleven, so trash throughout the county. One. Number twelve, government funding. Number thirteen, so businesses that cater to tourists, you know, dog, dog boarding. I would even say like the lodging, the restaurants. Zero. Uh, number fourteen, so balancing land uses and preserving our natural resources. One. Um, fifteen, be broadband. And then sixteen, signage. One. Seventeen, the lodging, the restaurants. And then eighteen is attracting new industries. One, two, three, three.
Well, yeah, I, I got to, to.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to figure out is what everybody else voted for, so.
Yeah. So according to this, infrastructure.
Can we go through and see what people's top three were? There aren't that many of us. Yeah, we're not.
This is a pretty honest group. You are twenty-four and there are people who voted, so I'm impressed. Uh, Chicago, we have a lot higher numbers. Um, all right. Yeah, so I, and it, not necessarily who voted for what, but like this is clearly infrastructure, water and sewer, number one on the list. Everybody voted for it. Um, you know, and again, it's not that we won't look at local transportation, like clearly this is an issue that drives a lot of some of the other land use, um, potentials. I mean, that's, that's going to come first. Uh, and so same thing about poverty. Housing, I think is a big one, a lot of land use that needs to address. Uh, we'll look at things like attracting new industry, what the commerce side of this is, so commercial and industrial, um, and employment. But certainly housing, where people are living, what type of products that they're living in are, are, are significant aspects of the industry. Um, looking at skilled workforce. Right, there's a number, or, uh, three votes. And then the other high one is attracting new industry. So, yeah, I mean, I think a lot of this is like where people are living, what they're doing while they're here. Uh, and then, you know, how, how is their infrastructure that they're getting, their homes or their businesses, um, be prioritized. Yeah, I mean, I would say this is pretty consistent with feedback that we've been receiving. There's some really good ideas up here that we'll continue to explore as well. Uh, but certainly the focus is on that infrastructure and on that, um, the land use planning aspect of it.
Well, and, and it does tie into, I mean, there's that trillion dollar infrastructure package that's supposed to be coming out of Congress. So, I mean, I'm very interested in seeing how we can, um, optimize ourselves as recipients of that. Because I do believe that in this, in this area, we, I mean, in West Virginia, you can find some of the most impoverished places in the country, places that don't have things that people take for granted, like water. We have people who have to buy water because their creeks have dried up.
Or haul water.
They don't have public water. They have to haul it in. Yep.
I think someone had mentioned that actually, which certainly that's not something that you're seeing across the country. It, that's in very isolated areas, so that's.
Most people choose that life who have it.
Sure.
And they can still usually get a well, you know, drilled or something, but not here.
Um, all right, and then the, the next one that we can go through, I, I'm going to keep, uh, keep down the time that we had said. So we would just, we would take that, so what are like three specific projects that you would like to undertake? I know, I, I can appreciate what I'm about to say and maybe the backlash, but it's, it's like maybe don't, don't think so much about the funding right now or where the money's coming from. I know that it's very hard for you to force yourself from, when you're, you're in the positions that you're in. But if you, if you had to identify a project that is absolutely critical to achieving what we're seeing up here, it's not policy, it's something that you could go out and, and build today or install today or a program that you would, you would institute tomorrow, what would that be?
Infrastructure on that night, route night day.
So that's a great project. So infrastructure along route nineteen, you know, where's it coming from? What's it supporting? Yeah, exactly. So that's a great project. Anybody else? We can just, we won't go over the reviews. This is an inventory of developed or redeveloped properties. Assessment of what you may be. Yeah, that's a great, that's kind of what you're touching on.
Yeah, yeah. Then, then the other one I have is the, the developing the untapped, uh, recreational resources we have here. We have a lot of recreational resources that we're not even tapped into yet.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, but to me on nineteen, developing nineteen, infrastructure will bring capital.
That's needed.
That's needed, it, once it starts in my opinion, I mean.
Are you considering identifying the vulnerable, similar like free inventory of resources throughout that that your county even utilizing that? So that's, that's great. Make sure to write these down.
I'll worry, that's, I'll leave that. I'm going to have a long conversation with y'all here in a little bit.
All right.
Not today because we're running so long, but y'all going to be here for a week, right?
Yes, yep. Well, we're available to talk anytime, so, yeah.
All right.
Um, any other, yeah, any other projects, specific projects?
I think, oh.
Go ahead.
I think, uh, cleaning up the trash and the dilapidated homes so that someone could come in and put a new home on it to improve our housing.
Okay. I mean, we sit, you know, we're talking like home removal, probably, right?
In a lot of cases.
Yeah.
Mine was just to, I, to research and identify industries that are optimal to, to recruit, to come to Fayette County.
And it's asked, that could be a program that you could establish internally, you know, start to, that would take a couple of months, it could take a year to really do that kind of research, but I think that would be a really interesting, um, I guess, like tangible item to have and then you move forward and start to identify, you know, based on infrastructure improvements on nineteen. This would be appropriate here or, uh, you know, we have, we have proper locations in this area. So I think that all starts to tie together. That, that is an important aspect if you want to attract new industry, you need to know where to put them.
Or if we just want to get people who work from home to be here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
Let's have infrastructure for them.
Well, right, that goes back to like broadband or five G or whatever, right?
Yeah.
It's up to where, what's that?
And we need a place for them to live.
Yes.
So creating open opportunities, because that's part of the model.
That's always, exactly. It is all very interconnected. I mean, there's some things that drive, you, you do need to pick. And this will be something that we talk about when we reestablish the vision and then the goals. Um, you know, certainly there's hundreds and hundreds of things that you can do, but what should you do? What should you focus on in the next fifteen, twenty years, um, when you're thinking of it from like the county's perspective? I do think, you know, these programs, these projects will be very helpful, but there's a lot of other, um, considerations that we need to, to make sure we got with this.
Something that would help me is to, to learn of a couple of case studies of other communities similar to ours, how they went about, you know, developing, what their timelines looked like, what their priorities were.
Okay.
Um, because, you know, I, I like to go with lessons learned, you know? How, how can we, you know, kind of follow that blueprint that other counties have set out, other small areas who've done it right? What are lessons learned from the ones who didn't, you know, so we don't fall into things like that?
I mean, that, that's part of our, we have been everywhere, but we've been, uh.
Yeah, that's more like what I'm relying on you for. I mean, we, we, I mean, I've traveled and we've all traveled to different places and seen different towns, but I haven't, I have no in, knowledge of what the prior workforce was able to do or the population or all the considerations that were facing those areas. I don't know how many of them kind of evolved naturally to where they are, um, kind of like the town of Fayetteville did. Or, or how many actually had to, you know, wipe the drawing board and start over like we're having to do.
Yeah, I mean, there might be communities that have had, you know, nothing to do with coal, but they, they moved in the same direction that you want to move to, so it's not even necessarily their history.
Auto industry or other types of industry that, you know, aren't as robust as they were steel.
Yeah.
You know, those kind of things, but that's, that's the type of community we've had.
Yeah, that makes sense. I, and so I, I think that's something that we're able to bring. We have a lot of great case studies and again, we have people on our team who are, are really good at researching and finding other examples, you know, reaching out to those counties and those municipalities and like, what, you know, what steps did it take? What, what didn't work? We don't want to do that, but what did work and, um, you know, just kind of ground truthing that to what we see here. And if that's something that resonates, which it does, that's what we should move towards. I do think establishing the goals and the vision, the goals will help us determine which kind of case study we should be chasing down or looking at or examining, but, um, you know, in this overall process, I would say towards the end of this plan, we can start to prepare those kinds of case studies that is, is a lot of sense.
I would also like to see a, a two, five and eight-year outlook and have the commission go through and say, are we hitting our goals on year two, five, eight? And then of course, ten has to be read out again.
Yep, um, so there's, that's a great, that's a great point. Uh, and in the final comprehensive plan that we'll prepare, there'll be a section called, uh, session chapter order. It might be implementation. And inside that implementation, it's going to be how you're using this plan, you know, on a day-to-day basis, what the purpose of it is, you know, what the, funding sources might be, who your partners are, that type of thing. At the very end of it, one of my favorite parts of these documents when we prepare them is, um, a matrix that just, it's probably like two or three pages and it's, it's just action items, it's projects, it's very specific things that you need to do. And we can build into that, you know, two, five and eight years, you know, in two years you should be, should be doing this. Sometimes it takes three, sometimes you do it in six months, but either way, you're going to check it off. And you're already moving forward. Did something that we thought would take five years become a moonshot. It's just not going to happen. Maybe it's not your priority. So in ten years, someone's going to come through and say, why didn't you finish this? Fell off our radar, we didn't want to do it anymore, take it off the list and, you know, re-prioritize. But that is a really helpful tool that'll, that'll be very much in your, your kind of real house and your responsibility. Everyone in the, in the community will know what you're, what you're working towards and I think that's really important. That's a good point. That's, that's something we'll bet with you as well and I think we'll bet with the community to make sure we're all.
How are we, one thing Ruth pointed this out to me during the break, but how are we deconflicting? Because apparently, and I didn't realize this, the municipalities have a requirement to do a comp plan too.
Yeah, so basically that was one of my concerns is, in Fayette County, like you guys said, it's very broad. I think it may help, it's possibly on the map. So each, at least four municipalities have, have their own plan. See, our comprehensive plan does not have anything to do with the county, with municipalities. Like so Fayetteville, all of our stuff can be outside. Fayetteville has their own comprehensive plan. So I don't know, I mean, that's a kind of a challenge. So if you go to municipalities, you're going to get a lot of fix the streets Fayetteville, fix the hills, so.
Exactly.
It is, yeah, and I know you guys know it, just, you know, letting the public know that our plan isn't going to oversee Mount Hope. I know Mount Hope has one, Oak Hill, Fayetteville, I believe the Valley is working on their own as well, because the Dummer County has one. So that's a challenge to figure out what county versus municipality.
Yeah, I just believe it's important that the comprehensive plan is not playing for that area. It, it, it doesn't mean though that we're not examining, like I would look, we'll look at every one of those comprehensive plans or strategic plans, whatever they have in place to make sure that we're not, you know, proposing something that's right adjacent, uh, adjacent to what they think is going to be a new residential area or a new commercial, whatever it might be. Um, and then also the considerations are, you know, you plan for something and then the municipality grows and it's that property, you no longer really have jurisdiction over it, it's not your responsibility. So I, I, there is, there is a need for these plans to talk to each other. Um, but we certainly don't want the county plan to supersede or like overstep into the municipalities. So it is, it is a challenge, it really is a challenge of our common ride plan where you're responsible for a large area. You're not responsible for where a majority of people live. And that education component is going to be really important that people understand we're not, we're not talking about this space here so much as, you know, what's happening out in the county.
Well, it does have to marry, um, the municipality's willingness and ability to fund. Well, it does have to marry the municipality's willingness and ability to fund certain things, because if we get infrastructure up to the edge of a municipality, and they're not willing to continue it. You know, it's.
Oh, within their comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's where the information exchange will need to occur, and that's a big part of what we're doing here over the next couple, couple months. I know we talk a lot about public engagement and public outreach, and that is a core component of this, but a lot of it is also, you know, working with all the different municipalities, working with Fayette, working with, you know, whoever it may be. So there's, we want to make sure that people are all represented, and can let us know what they're thinking about doing strategically, so we're not, you know, like, what we were doing in the structure up here, we were thinking over here. It is a little more coordinated than that, but you just want to make sure you don't miss something, that would be, that would be a critical error. Same thing with zoning, zoning is not superseding what's happening in the municipality, uh, which is maybe something we want to, that's just how it works. All right, and then, again, if there's any other projects, because we go down, we're gonna collect these sheets here, and it's, last one is just, and one most important one, of the primary strengths and assets here in Fayette County. A lot of times when we do these types of claims, all we're talking about is issues and problems, concerns, and this is broken, it's a requirement, fix this, and, there are reasons that people live here, choose to live here, and want to live here, there's reasons that people come here, so what are those assets? You don't want to break something that's working really well, just because we, you know, we think we have a great idea. And I, I didn't say this in the beginning, I do think I said this before this group, but it, it is important to note, this is not, you know, trickery and explain, this is not House of Lords plans, I cannot stress that enough. Our job is to bring our expertise to, you know, your group, to your board, or DA, and just make sure that you, you have our, our experience in preparing these comprehensive plans. We need to know everything we possibly can from, from you, from the public, from the business owners, what do you want to see, and we'll put that into a document, or, throw it together, a lot of what will be conflicting concepts or ideas, but that's, that's what we're charged to do. But in the end of the day, this is your document, and you're gonna need to use it over the next twenty years to, you know, see through all of these different vision goals, I think that's important. The distinction is to make sure that that's clear. So, anybody want to share one of theirs, what's, what's an asset here in the, in the county?
Quality of life.
Quality of life. What's that?
I can't get that off my mind.
Get him a T-shirt or something.
Yeah. Route 19.
Make sure it's pink.
I, I think so.
Recreation, recreation's a big asset here.
Our outdoor activities. And I'm, I'm all for the recreation.
I think we have a tradition of hospitality here in West Virginia, I mean, we help each other, this is an impoverished state, everybody would help each other do things, we welcome people here in a way that most people haven't ever seen before. A lot of people move here for that reason.
Anyone else? New Roots Community Farm, okay, check that out. Well, I'll make sure, we're gonna come around, and if you want to copy this, you can see the photo, or come pull up your sheets.
Yeah, y'all are gonna be around, I mean, y'all only work nine to five?
A little bit more than that.
I'm just, I'm gonna have to ask, I go, I would like to meet with you, you all, Jenna, not taking away from the commissioner, so I know y'all short in time, and I got a lot to talk about.
Really pushing every time this week.
Okay.
Can we, can we do, can we serve a meeting?
Yeah, we can serve a meeting. I, I, yeah, we'll do that.
The, and then are you in the next, who's, who's in it, you're in the next meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay, eleven o'clock, all right, so if there's stuff to do.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have to go to business, but I would, I was planned on being here, but I got some things I need to take care of.
Well, we took two hours of time, and I, again, I appreciate you participating in this, letting us do an overview, you know, some notes that we need to take, and we'll make sure we share our presentations beforehand. And then, it's a pretty formal discussion, so if anytime you want to break in, and you just let us know if there's things that we should be talking about, if we missed anything, certainly, as we start going through the process, you know, we just, we have that kind of, that kind of dialogue, if something comes up over the next couple of days, or if we've missed it, I would say, send an email to, uh, Jenna, she'll get it off to our, our project team, and make sure that we're all, you know, getting that information, and then with that, you know, we're excited to meet with, our next group is the project team at local, the beginning of that local outreach team, and, from there, we're really gonna get out to the county, and everywhere we possibly need to give notice, I'm not pretty sure.
Yeah, go ahead. We got, thank y'all.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate it.
We got five minutes, okay. I saw I seen you on America's Most Wanted.
Probably chasing somebody down.
And he's a certified officer, so, he does our field academy, run around, he was a deputy sheriff a little bit, Raleigh County, wanted to come back to the, to that fat bill, and.
Sweet.
Head to head.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, man, nice to meet you, congratulations.
Okay, Angie, you got a slide? Ruth, turn it over to you.
So, your first one is removing Commissioner Taylor and reappointing Commissioner Luises to the Fat Raleigh MPO and River Transit Authority Board.
Are there two different?
One's an order and one's a letter, that's how they request them.
Oh, I see, okay. There's one for each, I move that we approve these changes.
I second.
You can't second, okay, I'm sorry.
Can I move?
Yeah, second.
Okay.
You can't second yourself, okay.
Yes, he can, he can.
I'm sorry, blue pen.
I'm talking to me.
I'm pretty sure he can't second, actually, it's like we did all the appointments.
Go ahead with number two, Ruth.
So, number two is a request from Suzy Miller to contract a vista worker to the Root Farm.
Okay.
What is a vista worker?
Okay, um, yeah, this is for becoming site sponsors, hierarchy of organizations that, you may have four members, and you were able to, your, two of those positions, so six thousand dollars per position for a full year commitment, that's directed to year sixteen, and the staffing plan that I presented last, in July, we had just included the license of your four members in there, but I've, I've been working that and updating it, and it's option to get two, and in my mind, it's a much better deal for, for the commission, and for the project, be able to secure two members for twelve grand, and be able to get increased staff capacity, or just be in another part of the city. And we're all doing, staffing moves are happening, really, the community free system program, and part of the farm, this is definitely a focus for that.
I'm a little curious, just, did you, is all this information that I got from you? All this information.
No, some of it is what Suzy sent, and then the other is the expenses we have, and the budget from.
Is this from Suzy?
The highlighted one, the one you highlighted, this one's Suzy's.
Oh, this is from Suzy?
Yeah, and so I didn't know that I was on the agenda for this item, I assumed that this was a review approval, and then was notified last week that I was on the agenda, so I just provided a few documents, I'm not sure, the documents I provided should be this one, and this one.
Yeah, that's it, on the backside.
Okay, and then here is like, explaining quarterly staff breakdown, this really isn't super relevant to the, what I'm trying to get an answer on right now, but it, I thought it might help, see the breakdown. This also is definitely not, so it's relevant, it still goes along with the staffing plan, for the end term for the next year, and then the other two should be, there is the higher office optimization, so that's what you agree to as a site sponsor, so the fire, fire ops is the legal organization.
Okay, I'm not trying to put you off, and be up to the other two commissioners, but, as of right now, we haven't got any information back on the Farmland Protection Board, on some information that we sent them. And, and I was under the assumption that they was gonna get back with our attorney on some information, on the lease and stuff, that they have, I don't know how the other commissioners feel.
The MOU.
The MOU, and, well, there's a lease too.
Is there?
There's a lease, there's a lease also.
MOU is part of it.
And there was a change of, yeah, the MOU and the lease, and they haven't got back yet, so, really, I, you know, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but really, until that happens, I really, and they should have already got back with their lawyer, from what I understand, they haven't conferred with him or anything. And I would just like to postpone this until fifteen, and put them, I mean, how do y'all feel about, tell me your thoughts.
I'd like to add that, like, I, that is outside of my ability to be able to dictate to the board, because, you know.
Oh, you're, I'm not saying you to dictate.
I'm still ultimately responsible for operations of the time, and continuing with the staff plan that's already been presented back in July. that's already been presented back in July and moving forward on this. This is also our ability to recruit. So it's mandatory that whoever recruited spends a training on the sixteenth and seventeenth. And so if we miss that deadline, and we can't tell people, yes, this will be approved on the fifteenth, then it's going to be really hard for us to have recruited folks. And we're likely going to miss this opportunity. I do understand that there's some trouble about easily to navigate communications and getting stuff done between the Farmland Protection Board and the commission, but yeah, I still am responsible for operating the projects, moving forward and meeting our grant.
So you're asking for another person, right?
Yeah, I'm asking for two AmeriCorps.
Two more, two more? It doesn't, it doesn't cost us any more money, right?
It's $6,000 per person, and what you can see here is where that money comes from and how that sets us up for the revenue, what the revenue and excise tax account look like into this month as we move into October with new staff and staff. So I was just trying to provide you with information that shows we have the money in the account. We would pay out that money, and also like showing in there the other expenses and income that are going to come through the revenue account, which is now in September, to show that we are appropriately managing that account. And on the fifteenth, I'll be giving the, a presentation on the other staff updates.
Okay, where did this information come from, Suzy?
That was very old at this point. That's the budget presentation.
So that's the, that's projected. This is.
This is from January of twenty twenty-one.
And what you projected?
Yeah, that's, this is.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this is what was presented. As you can see, it was up to date. So this was February of twenty-one is when this presentation was made. And this is really just demonstrating the money that has been spent from the various accounts to date, and then expected expenses to come out of those accounts.
It's got a revenue on here, too.
Yeah.
Okay, it says you projected eighty-one thousand. What, what time of year would this be? By the end of twenty-one?
Yeah, and so we, what I'm also, what I think is more relevant would be the other documents that were provided to you that provides an update of like where our quarterly income is starting in October. So I can really show you where the revenue account is managed through September, and I've projected out with new information, more accurate information, the quarterly income that you can see in the two documents that are here and the projected.
Well, I'll tell you, at this time, I'm not able to give you an answer. I agree on the lease as well as the MOU. Once we receive those, then I'll be able to give you an answer. But if on the fifteenth, looking ahead at this paperwork, if you're going to try to give yourself an eleven thousand dollar plus raise, I, I'm concerned about that. So I'll just.
And I guess my question is just like, right, is the issue between moving work forward that involves the commission and Farmland Protection Board is that one of the hamstring, the project moving forward, is that, like, is that what I'm trying to understand by this communication? Is that?
Me also, it's the revenue that you're bringing in, too. It says twenty twenty-two, you plan, plan on bringing in two hundred thousand dollars in revenue.
Yeah, so that breaks down, I'm assuming, I'm assuming you're looking at.
That's, this right here, you gave us in February.
Yes, in February, right, and so that probably includes a breakdown, and this is old, so I'm not like up to date on, I did not review this for this meeting, but I'm assuming that accounts for excise revenue, grant revenue, and.
Well, shouldn't. The only thing you got listed here is regional and, region and revenue. It don't include, to me, this is just, and it may be wrong, is the sales from the products.
Yeah, so this, this is income, so look, this is a hundred grand. This is for New Ridge Community Farm, and then this is the income that we're generating for other farmers based on their sales through Turnaround Collective. That sums, that is where the two hundred thousand dollar total comes from.
Do you think, that's what I meant, do you think you're going to reach the two hundred thousand?
Um, yeah, I, I can go back and pull all of the numbers for the sales for the farmers.
Because it's got fifty-eight thousand here on this one, it's supposed to be eighty-one here. I'm just curious, in, in looking at, looking at the numbers, they look a little off.
I, I would agree that this is not a great presentation of this breakdown, and I think this issue of getting conflated with the programmatic work that we do for aggregation and distribution for the turnaround network, that is a discussion of generating additional income for farmers in this region that are utilizing the online retail market platform as well as wholesale.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I know I don't have a whole lot of time, but I was out at the farm the other day because I, I raised some of my own tomatoes this year, and I was just curious, I drove by there and I see how y'all got them strung up, and I thought that was really, really cool, probably John's idea. And made it, and I see there's a lot of onions and other stuff still on the, is that stuff being sold? Or is it gonna, is it, what's going to happen with the, the product that you have right now there?
Yeah, we, we sell it weekly, we, every Monday, we pack out for Turnarow as well as wholesale buyers. So in the quarterly income, I've tried to break down on a monthly basis our major outlets for where we sell products. That is through Turnarow as a wholesale client, and we also work directly, we do direct sales, so that's the DS wholesale with restaurants. And then we have our retail goals, so that we're reaching our farm market, as well as the food, our vendors, the gateway market and the Fayetteville market. So that describes where we have that income. The largest portion of when we bring in our income is between mid-August to the end of November. It's actually the largest first, the crops and the highest volume. We have pretty much a half acre field of crops that haven't been pulled yet. So I am happy to like provide a bigger presentation on how we do production planning, how we understand what our weekly sales goals are, that we're, to demonstrate that we're reading those. That's going to take more time, and I think if that is your interest, I'm happy to prepare a PowerPoint presentation that shows how we do production planning and how we go back and check that we're reading our weekly sales goals.
So most of these products are taken out of county?
Um, I would say no, I would say a majority of them.
In your sales here, that was projections for, okay, well then, last year.
I, I would say it's, it's a mixed, it's a mixed bag, but right now that we're facilitating sales to the schools and we have a regional sales manager, Gina is able to take off the wholesale product that's in our region and keep it in our region, which mainly is in our counties.
How much have you sold to the schools this year?
I can pull that number for you. If, if you guys want a more in-depth presentation on all of those revenue numbers, I would be happy to prepare that information for you. But as of right now, I was just asking for the ability to spend the twelve grand to get secure two year-long AmeriCorps positions for the farm, the support with the food access initiatives, which grows market opportunities for other farmers in our region. The communities are engaging with the schools. The school has also been, Antifans has also been aware of AmeriCorps, and so we're trying to figure out how we're strengthening the connection between the schools and the farm, not just through sales, but through programming. And these positions would allow us to do that, and it's going to be difficult to make that happen outside of the AmeriCorps option.
Okay, so there's AmeriCorps, and then there's Vista. One of them, don't you have to offer housing for?
The Vista, I don't think either one you have to offer housing for, but the only thing that we are, is we have to have a site supervisor that is checking in with the Americas on a weekly basis, that's in the site agreement. We have to pay the six thousand dollars. We have to do the recruiting, and those people have to attend orientation on the sixteenth and seventeenth. And those are the primary responsibilities for our organization. There's a list of things that we should not do that are pretty standard, operating the secret store and managing.
Okay, so you need to bring them on the sixteenth and seventeenth of September? Okay, and has this position been published? So you've had other people applying for it?
Yes, I've been trying to advertise it, but without having confirmation that we're going to spend that money, I'm in a kind of difficult position where I'm trying to recruit people, but I'm like also telling them that I'm not sure that this is, I don't have the authority to say that, yes, we're just going to.
So when you presented this before, you didn't, you didn't present needing two other people?
I presented in July that we would do one AmeriCorps position that would cost six thousand dollars. But as has been the entire part of the project, is that I'm constantly trying to get a moving target, and I made the assessment that it would be a much better deal to spend the six grand and get another full-time worker, full-time service member that can support growing the food access programming. That has a lot of potential and also can help us secure, by developing that program, helps you after other grants and support funding to build that up.
But if you presented one, I really don't want to do the second. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it.
Where are the salaries coming from? What fund source?
So I don't know what your specific documents you're looking at, but I can show you, right, the staff plan that I presented in July. It has the two salaries for everyone, and then it breaks it down. There's the revenue and excise tax account, and then there's all of the grant accounts that we have, and it shows the breakdown for each person across the row as to where that money comes from. The majority of it is coming from the revenue account for these, for the part-time folks. And that is disconnecting them from some of the keys to fill out and meet some of these, like, grant objectives.
Ruth, do we have all of the invoices in for the farm?
At that, you have asked.
Rent objectives, if they need to write the grants, that's what your talent is. Can't write the grants because they're not, they don't have the time for it.
I think that's what we gave them last Friday, so I don't know if you can have it soon. Yeah, it's, I mean, the invoices for the farm coming to me were paid up on our P card statements and all the invoices that we have received. And then I'm also projecting in there that we're going to send, you know, what are, where are these arcos coming from? And any other operational expenses outside of staff are included, demonstrates that we have the money in there. I'm happy to have a larger conversation about the rest of the staffing plan. I guess I am, yeah, I do think that agreeing to sponsor two AmeriCorps members is going to be the best option for accounting and the best use of money. But that's, yeah, that's, that's my opinion, and you can make the other questions that you have around staff.
I'd like us to let Wayne make his presentation and then go, move to go into executive session about this.
Okay, as long as you don't take long. So we're, we're going to go into executive session after Wayne talks to us real quick. And then. Wayne, talk quickly. Put wings on it.
Do we need to?
Get your Red Bull.
Sheriff Ridley, do we need to go into executive session for this discussion with you as well? Is it personnel about hiring, or you're just going to brief us on something? I feel like we should do that. I feel like we should do that, too.
Yeah. Same time.
Well, I mean, I feel like we should let him make his presentation before we go into executive session. So we can just knock it out. Okay, go ahead.
A little question asked about why we'll simply table and stuff in the campaign.
The question was, should we enter into this agreement right before your big season ends? Or should we enter into it, like sometime in spring or something?
Yeah, the, I've been seeking the whole table or the jukebox and another name, something to go in the camping all summer. Back when I had a meeting with John and Ruth in December, I asked if we could put them back there. So I've been on the look, and Dairy Music Company used to supply this area. It's pretty heavy with every, all gaming options. They had moved basically out of Oak Hill, they still have a building. They're running everything from Charleston out, and they really don't want to service the park, is what they hope. So basically, we search, search, search for a gaming company. Angel happened to be at Corner Gas and Grill in Pax for the jukebox area, the tag with the jukebox. I don't have the name on it, bingo. She called him last year and said, well, sure, we're up in that area all the time anyway. So the first contract that they submitted us was five years. And so we, the Kenley County, we agreed with, for one year at a time. That was in July, and I believe Ruth passed that on to Anthony at that time, back in July. To my knowledge, the Anthony never got back a full five-year contract?
No, and it was changing. I think he said realistically, the model of it, but it's just, whatever you take in, they give a percentage, you give a percentage. It's like anything, so he said it last year.
Yeah, there, there is some fine line and stuff. I've been hearing big cancer before the year and all this stuff. They want twenty percent, what they think they should have gotten, all this type of deal. So it's really not, not like I was asking for it right then, because even if I tell them yes the other day, they told us it'd probably be three weeks till month before. So I was seeking permission to go ahead and enter into an agreement with this company to get this stuff.
In other words, you're afraid you're not going to get it if you don't?
Well, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure they would do it next year. In fact, I actually found another company now.
Okay.
Clay Music, we're wanting Clay Music.
Okay.
No, it's just happened to see a market in there this other day. So, so there is a local, more local place, but we have been working with these folks, and they did amend their contract from five years to one, but that was a totally different note. So, and it wasn't nothing, it's not like, yeah, we want it there now. It, it's not going to cost us anything. This, in fact, I mean, the only thing that will cost us is to put the jukebox in. Okay, we, the contracts is, they are probably read it, but the, the jukebox, we get fifty percent after feet. So whatever it takes, you know, we get half of it. The claw machine, because they have, they don't really do arcade games anymore. Everybody has a smart plan, so they don't do arcade games, they're about to hang in the past. The pool table is fifty percent, less for the fees. And the fees is usually, from back when, I remember when we had pool tables and stuff at my dad's place, it was, like, the taxes, they took the taxes off the top, and then they divided it out.
Yep.
So that, again, it doesn't cost us nothing if it's sitting in there now. And it goes all the way through, it doesn't cost us a penny. They maintain everything, that, that's what that's all about.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't.
Now, will you have this opened up during your holiday?
No, probably, probably not. If we brought our concessions to the campaign, we'll forget last year.
You guys, I have a, I have a meeting, I'm sorry, on a case. My one going on.
My motion to approve it.
Second.
Your motion is second to approve the bingo contract with the party. All those in favor?
Hi.
What's that now?
It's the last page you can have, link's the last page. I'll rewrite that.
Yeah.
Again, this is something that I'm seeking permission to try to do.
Where is the Fall Festival? Last page. Oh, okay.
What we have done is I have talked with the health agencies and things like that, and right now they're still saying outdoor activities is fine. So, you know, we're planning to go, and we need to put some fillers out there. We have like eight vendors committed to coming. If we're allowed to have. If we're allowed to have it. I have Brent Cashin, said he would bring his sawmill over and ask his sawmill for a demonstration.
Have you advertised this or you can't advertise it till we say something?
Right, right, it's all, all pending approval. But everybody's just wanna, we may be doing this, we'll let you know as soon as I can.
Hmm, apple butter. Okay, when, what date are we looking at?
October 23rd, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the weekend after bridge day.
The weekend after bridge day. It is kind of late, but with everything else going on, Country Roads is Thursday, Saturday of September and stuff. But that's, that's our flyer that we're gonna put out.
Pumpkin painting and all that.
The haunted trail, probably even haunted track hall, just depends on the weather right now.
And the money's in the budget, I guess, right?
Yeah, and that number, it may not be that, it will depend on the price of the contractors. And that's the way we include a speaker system with Sam's club when they mark them down.
When they mark them down. As often as we had to have the pool closed, we didn't pay lifeguards out there.
I don't have a problem, you have a problem? No, I don't either. My motion to approve it. Okay, I'll do a second. Got motion second to approve a fall festival on the date of 10/23. All those in favor? Are we still gonna look at doing a fair this coming year?
This is, the fall festival is kind of like a filler to see. Yes.
Good.
It has been 20 years to the day since Set County has had a fair anything.
Okay. Hey, Ruths?
Yes.
We're, we're doing?
I just saw on the left, it doesn't really say which ones, so you're agreeing to it and they're gonna agree to it. It's not labeled very well.
No, it's not. There used to be a music company in Princeton too that would do.
They wouldn't come up, but this bingo is in Virginia, they, they do that.
Okay. CNC Music, I think is what they used to be called. Something like that. All right. Apple butter making and everything else, okay.
If I can make it happen with the candles, and I know how, but it takes one person to make apple butter, so.
Yeah, it does. If you, we'll talk. Cause I can come out and we'll play. And give me a copy of it too, so I can take it to the station. Do a PSA on. Thank you, buddy. Okay, Sheriff, go ahead.
Received 13 applications for all boards slash animal control, whatever you wanna call it. Only, I have two questions for the commission before I start moving forward. One, you want me to hire two? So I need, we gotta figure out a salary, we've not talked about it before. And the second thing is, does the commission want to have it take over? And out of the sheriff's department's mind and it falls underneath the commission, so that I have that.
I don't think so, but that's something we, I don't, in my opinion, I don't think so, but I mean.
It was brought up before Mr. Louise, and I'm ready to back it up, so that's the only thing. Other than that, we have 13 applications, two questions. One, we hired two, we need to figure out what the salary is gonna be. 25, I think, was proposed, 25,000 each, plus benefits and stuff. You know, that's, that's something that Ruth and commission have to figure out, cause it would need to be happening. Plus, I would have to buy them uniforms, cause I wanna be, you know, the khaki pants and a nice shirt to wear with them. So they identify who they are and then share in that one vehicle.
Can, can we put this on agenda and make a decision on?
I wanna, we need to move, I mean.
Yeah, we need one. We need one, we need two now.
And we've been behind since.
August 1st.
So I'm trying to get everything.
If we, if we make a decision, you want us to make a decision today?
On what?
If we, on what to do.
I just need to know, I need to, cause when I interview these people, I want to start salary is a big thing. And then if, if y'all take it, whatever.
No, I don't think, I don't think, I don't know how John feels about it. I think that you should continue with it. Yeah, yeah.
The biggest thing is, Mr. Wees, is I didn't know can we forward, pay $25,000 to people? Still will have just a small amount of overtime. But just for emergency, if somebody's off or vacation, whatever it might be. Salary for Russell was 26,000 so many dollars. There's also an item of 20,500 in overtime, which we would eliminate overtime hopefully with two people and doing a schedule right, having coverage during the day and in the evenings and stuff. But again, I just need to know, I mean, I don't have to do it today. I don't need to know today. I mean, after y'all talk with Ruth and Ruth and call me saying.
Okay, can we do that, Dan?
I want separate interviews to hear from y'all.
Okay, we'll, we'll go, we're gonna go into executive session.
Yes, sir.
And that will be one topic we'll talk on real quick, cause I think Ruth probably has everything worked up for it.
Or might have changed his budget anyway, cause insurance realistically will be.
We don't know with insurance and stuff until we get people hired. There might be somebody hired that needs insurance, that's married, it might be somebody that's not married, or there might be somebody that don't need insurance.
That, I think, yeah.
I think the difference is not only will you do the 25.
Yeah, yeah. Can we, can, do you have those with you?
I do.
Can you tell us the, the names on a piece of paper? I mean, I don't wanna read them out loud, but.
Okay, yeah, I can, I'm, Ruth looked at it, and I just let the commission know that if it's wanna stay with me is the sheriff. Only person gonna be in an interview with myself and Ruth. I mean, I don't need people from outside coming to tell me this and that, so.
Okay, yeah, I don't have much time even doing executive session. Yeah. I'll make a motion, go into executive session at 11:38.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, if you can just do that for us, it's appreciated.
Did you guys approve the park?
Yes.
And the festival?
Yes.
What was the?
That was, that was part of.
Who less, and I received 13 total applications. I just need to know from the commission how much we'll be able to pay them when we go to. And I'm gonna start the process, it's my hair, like Ricky Tiki and Ruth's will set it up here. But after these things, I've got to do that.
Good. Have you figured out what you want the shifts to be inspected?
I'm gonna come up with a schedule.
Six total?
Yeah, three for each. Three pants, three shorts, three long sleeves.
Okay.
Gotcha. When I sort them through goals. What does it, just set it there?
Yeah, just set it.
Okay.
Andrew